Thanks again, everybody, for coming out. Our question and answer by Commissioner Luke Steffin along here with Commissioner Kamau, everybody else from the city. I hope you had a wonderful Thanksgiving, nice and restful, enjoyable, and now we're all back here, hopefully not in that turkey coma anymore, had a little bit of time to come out of it, and hopefully had some time to think about any more questions or concerns or comments. Just for, just one little note here before we kind of start here, right now, we would like to hear first from any city residents who didn't have a chance to ask their questions last time. We just want to try to get a little bit of depth to them first. After that, if nobody else wants to speak for some time, we want to open it up then to anybody who might have some connection directly to the city, either they're like has some businesses in the city or do business in the city, ask and answer their questions, and then we'll kind of open it up to the rest of the public to divulge this. We just want to make sure that we address anybody and everything that we can. So, please, who, anybody want to raise your hand and start on up?
I do. My concern is on this NIA, is we have a one-time opportunity right now, we got Tom Stoltz's property, it's only 40 acres, but after that, when I look at the map of Emily City, there is no more acres. So I'm sure you're going to capitalize on that money there, but at that point, I think where the really, the bulk of the money's going to come from is all of us sitting here. That's my concern. Because where are you going to get the land?
Sure.
The new build.
You do have behind Croker, so there's all that area that's there.
Well, DTE bought that one chunk on the corner, so I don't know if they're willing to give that up, and we don't know about what LaFontaine would like to do.
Sure.
You know, I think Alan might have his own idea where he wants to run with it, I'm not sure, but...
Right.
But that's not a lot.
Sure, and then you do have the 425 area, which is south of Newark, that's all new development area, and then there is also...
Which one is that?
So let me show them the map. So that's over here, this was the recent annexation that took place here.
Huh? That was where?
They got the town's...
A lot of them to have it?
Yeah.
Okay, now that's...
I've heard of that.
Over 69?
So north of 69 still, so it's...
So it's right where Tom Stoltz pretty much is in that...
Diagonal. Yep, diagonal, so this is Stoltz. This is, so it's mainly farmland and some houses, but you have black corners and then Newark, polyandrial.
Yeah.
So there is that new construction. The other thing is to keep in mind is that you can have redevelopment too, where you do have some different components. You do have the LaFontaine Strip Mall that's going to come in, he has some acreage back there, could you potentially do some things there?
That's correct.
But part of that is, we don't know what that incremental gain's going to be over time, but...
I get it, but I'm still saying, I just want my voice to be heard, I think where the bulk of the money's going to come from is us people sitting here. When now you want to sell your home, or do anything, or any kind of home improvement, your taxes go up, so there's where, I just feel like that's, whatever thing I've read on the NIA, that's really where it comes from. You know, and really, it's made for blight, you know, that's where a lot of people put it in place for blight. And I don't really see blight in Emily City, Michigan, like you would see over maybe in Detroit, or Flint, or, you know, one of those bigger places.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh huh.
What do you think is going to change, if you're in your house, and we have this organization, or we don't, what is going to change? What's going to change as far as your...
Well, what my concern is, what could possibly change, is okay, let's do some little home improvements, you know, we're going to do some sidewalks, we're going to do this, but now, we need a little extra money for the NIA, so let's just raise everybody's taxes?
That won't happen.
Well, I will never say it won't, because I always hear things can, and it's amazing what happens.
Sure.
Yeah, I can never say it won't.
But in this case, though, NIA and even us, we are not a taxing authority in that regard, we have no ability to raise the taxes.
The state raises taxes.
The state raises taxes, it all comes down from the statutes, that is, nothing that we have to deal with.
But at some point, you guys put information, like, look at these home improvements, and what we've done, so they are assessing it on information provided.
Sure, but like we just said, by doing those improvements, we avoid the...
So people do have a process in it that are here. I mean, maybe not us sitting in the audience, but maybe who's ever doing the tax assessing, and anybody who lends somebody a ear, I mean, that's been around a long time, I've seen a lot of things, they say, well, never, and it always comes, it does.
Do you want us to explain how the state raises taxes?
Well, I think my...
No, I don't really want to hear it.
She's good.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not interested in that, yeah. I just want my voice concerned to be heard, because I think we've all been around, we've seen things when people say, never, oh yeah, it shows up.
Sure, very much. Yeah, I was thinking, as well, adding to that, like, if you built a pole barn, or you built a deck, or your front porch, or you added a bathroom, you get taxed and reassessed at that new value, they're not going to give you that same price plus the square footage. So if you have the mall down the road, we built those homes across the street, now you're being assessed, not at 160, you're getting reassessed at 185.
Well, you can only be assessed by a certain cap each and every year.
But if you added the items, it's 5%.
It wouldn't matter if they've improved there, there's always still a cap.
So if I attach the deck to my home, and I put...
But that's you improving your home.
Yes, but I'm improving my home, and we're improving their home, but if we're building new homes across the street, that is bringing, is that not rent tax value?
If you stay in that house, if you, correct me if I'm wrong, if you stay in that house, you still cannot go above what that cap is each and every year, regardless of who does, whatever they do around you.
So if I aspery for it to my house...
It does not affect everybody else.
No, 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 it would almost uncap me, and then uncap me 5%?
No.
No. Okay, then my other part of that, okay, thank you.
No, you're fine, that was great, you did well.
The second thing is, when we develop this land, why is it Emily City's responsibility to, or I guess the citizens, to develop the land, front the money for the farmland, so then other people can, so the developer can come in, develop the land, build newer homes, we hope our homes, most likely it's going to be federal money to either do like condos, apartments, duplexes, it's a lot easier, yeah, it's a lot easier to buy a home next to farmland, a lot harder to sell a home next to apartments. And I know we have apartments already in Emily City, but to put them right by the school district, I mean, that's going to kill those blocks of streets, that's where I live, for goodness sakes. And on top of that, now, if 400 homes would be amazing for Emily City, I think we all agree on that, however, we come in, it's federal money, we go 50/50, the feds say, okay, here's 15 million, matches the 15 million, you guys build $30 million project, okay, now we have 800 homes there, or apartments, that's 800 more kids into Emily City schools. Now who's funding the Emily City School District? More money, they're going to need a bond, they're going to need bigger schools, more buses, I know, we got a big picture of everything.
Absolutely, but part of it is, is that school percentage, as those are developments, they benefit?
Yes, if you have apartments, other parks only get $7 per trailer, so how much are we going to get from the apartments?
Well, first of all, that's a great point that you're bringing out, the concern that you have in your voicing, is that, as far as I know, in that section, correct me if I'm wrong, that is not multi.
Yes, for now, but who controls the vote?
But it has to come before planning to pass.
You do.
No.
I know, the city.
Bingo.
I know, the city. Wait a minute, no, it doesn't... I know, it was me and my five buddies were hanging out, and I wanted something, me and my five buddies were just passing, I'm not saying that's how it is, but it's also, it's exactly like that. If I was in almost your guys' shoes, and I wanted, if I needed a thousand apartments instead of 400 homes, I would almost do it myself. It makes the most sense, but it doesn't make sense for Emily City and the citizens.
And...
I think, is this the fourth meeting, third meeting? I mean, come on, it's not worth it for us, if we have this meeting once again, I mean, you have the, you have older people, you have the middle-aged, you have the young ones, I know it won't affect us, it's a 5% raise every year, we're capped, it's fine, it's the next generation of kids that move in here, it's the young families that are moving in, your taxes are already crazy, we understand that, we have to pay taxes, but you can't let the next person that comes in here and buys a $300,000 home pay $12,000 a year in taxes, that's unnecessary. I, myself, this year, this is my first full year only at Emily City, 1100, or 1100 square foot, I'll pay $6,300 in taxes, that is crazy, I'm going to bounce from $265,000...
But this says nothing...
I understand, but the next person that comes home, when they have to sell their home, they only own one floor or something, their home's now $400,000, someone needs to come in at $200,000 of taxable value and income, what does that equal, it's almost $12,000 a year for taxes for Emily City. I guess, so this doesn't affect taxes? I know, it doesn't affect taxes, but eventually, it's going to raise, it makes things better, and I... We don't know that that's going to raise any taxes.
We don't know that.
Taxes are just going to raise naturally. Our Bobby's going to run for $20 million for 30 years. We're not spending any money. We're saving the money, that would go all the way to the county. In a way, in a way, and I agree with you guys, but it's in a way.
Thank you.
Okay, one of the questions I asked my daughter was, her large, her classroom now, she has a kindergarten, she has three children's school, and, because your average across the United States is 18 students per classroom, I guess that's ID, you know, 18 students, you don't know. Her kindergarten class is 29, so they're over, her kindergarten class is 29, the average is 18, they just hired somebody to bring down their class average, and they're down to 24, still above. So right now, we have a systemic issue with how many students already are in class, so we do this, what is the plan? I mean, and this is fact, there's 29, there was 29 students in her, my grandson's classroom, trying to get an education, one teacher, from my understanding, okay, but we'll say it's hearsay, I didn't go there and count them, so we're pretty overbooked in our classes. So what is the plan, and I know you guys all thought of this, what are we doing to better that for, since we want to, you know, build up condos?
We're going to do that, we're going to develop the land, and then we're going to put up a market, and then we're going to put, big complex, and then we'll get the bond money from us later.
And a wall art.
And a wall art.
Well, that's my concern, he is right, the future market, you know, the classroom gets bigger, are we going to have to build another high school?
And some of these things do bite off incrementally, so...
But we already have an issue with the size of the classroom, that's why.
But that's a school district decision.
Yeah, but what we do as a community fix the school.
Correct, and so that's where you get into when the planning commission reviews a site plan, and the planning commission reviews a subdivision development, when they review a rezoning request, those are reviewed by the planning commission, then are, the rezonings are blessed then by the city commission, so at each of those steps, our standards say you have to evaluate, if, let's say, it is 600 homes randomly added through some massive project, we are going to talk to the school and say, hold on a second, do you have capacity for this, and we can then evaluate the appropriate, yes, no, same thing with infrastructure.
How do they get the money, just real, I mean, I'm sorry about cutting y'all off, how do they get the money to buy it? And the land they bought for the soccer field, I think they paid a million for it, because I spoke to the person who found me, sold it, he might know better than I do, and I was told they, the school, I was told, hearsay, this is, I'm saying hearsay, it's not factual.
But we get the...
See, this, where does the school, is the school going to have, you sit to school's problems, in a way, do they have the money to stay like what we're planning here? Again, the future of Emily, I mean, what are we doing to our kids, are we going to dumb them down, are we going to tell them no, are we going to crowd the classes, I mean, did we consider that?
So as we have those developments, that taxation is still percentage, we're not capturing from schools, and so they would still get that.
Do they have the money, does anybody have the money to do that?
There's a lot of...
That's starting to get outside the scope of the NIA.
Well, no.
Right, that's not the range we have.
No, it's not, because the NIA, we're talking about community, we're talking about building up, we're talking about the effects of the citizens, we're here because you're affecting us, so we're not here because this is out of the scope, no, it's not out of the scope, because his children are going to go to school, so it's not out of the scope, he wants to live here, we want to, maybe we don't want to move to Florida.
But we have, we need more households to be able to have more people, because people live in smaller houses, or people live, less people live in one house, so even if you want to maintain the same population, you still need more households, you still have nationally trending less children, and so I think that is something we definitely need a partnership on, as we go through those gift scenarios, and make sure that we're still coordinating with one another, it's 100% what needs to happen.
I think Donna's got to answer.
Caitlin, I got to ask, when I start hearing the taxes, say Tom Walt, and now this citizen over here are already dealing with, could any of you guys tell me that if I was to sell a house in Emily City today, what Emily City even has to offer to make somebody want to pay almost a mortgage payment, just in taxes to be here? This absolutely could stop people from even being able to sell their house at this point. Should we be addressing the amount, or why the taxes seem to be, I know you're going to say they're state, state done, but they seem a little extreme, when I lived in town, it was $2,400 a year, that wasn't that long ago, but now you're talking numbers that scare me, I wouldn't think about buying a house in town right now, so where's NIA going to help with that? Because they need to capture tax revenue, whether a building or a business is sold, that's their only way outside of grants, which is a whole nother avenue that we should not go down, have big money grants funnel through this NIA, putting in playparts and doing things that the citizens have no control over, we will rely on our commission board, and we are relying on them tonight, because in three years, two years, this commission board ain't going to be up there, and then when it's, pockets are wide open and everybody's working together, we're going to be down, everybody's going to look at each other like, how'd this happen? We only got 25 more years to deal with this.
Sure.
It needs stopped, you guys, you have citizens here saying, please stop it, it just needs stopped, and we're hoping you guys are willing.
Because there's a few stages of that question, and so the first stage, I think, is that you have an incompatibility between the number of users to pay for the cost to maintain a system, everyone agrees costs have gone up, but we haven't had a lot of new users, right, so we haven't had a lot of new construction business, we haven't had a lot of new single-family homes, people have lived there a long time, so you don't have those uncapped recaps.
So where did the money go 20, 30 years prior to this, that we need to fix water mains, fix house service leads, where did the money go?
And I can't answer the incremental components of that, there's a lot of variables there, but I can tell you right now that there is a disconnect between how much you need to maintain the system, and that you don't have a lot of change in the users or that component, and so that's, I guess, part of your first phase of that question, the second phase of your question as far as, I guess, how does, correct me if I'm wrong, but are you looking for an answer on how the NIA...
My biggest...
Because they collect a certain portion of money we wouldn't have access to otherwise, so the county, when we have a major redevelopment change, that's when you have the biggest increase, so totally new construction.
Yes.
And so that's when you have the biggest change, and that money, the cash portion still goes to the county, but that portion can then be reinvested locally, so that's, like you said, can be for infrastructure.
The frozen amount, I just had this conversation with Mr. Kev, the frozen amount today on the property, that's what goes to the county, if NIA is approved, everything above kind of the frozen amount, minus the schools, minus is kept, so if I was a builder, Caitlin, I would not build here, taxes are already too high.
But you wouldn't, no.
Taxes would happen anyways.
The tax would happen anyway, it's just that we're capturing locally.
Instead of the county, it stays over here.
So...
So, because the percentage would still be the same.
That's a lot, a lot of money.
Yes, and it's up to our citizens to decide what happens with that money, not citizens in the local area, or...
So why should we not help our whole county out, like it's been going on for so many...
We do, through the baseline, there will be, and yes, there will be a big change with this one bit of property.
Just with the baseline, homie, there's, just with the baseline.
If the county didn't want it, they would have said, no.
The county said they didn't know about it, he said, the city manager and a county guy come over and they pitched it.
The county has to approve...
He said they pitched a good thing, and you guys...
No, the county has to approve it before we can even look at it.
Ian, would you like to address that?
But he said they didn't answer, so that was, maybe it has to go on the agenda, was it on the agenda?
So, can I, can I...
Yes, absolutely.
So the way it works is, is that if the city basically decides it wants to do an NIA, part of the IAs, the county money, that's what we're talking about, the city then has to notify the county, once the city notifies the county, and there's a specific date, the county has 30 days to object to that NIA and the capture of that county money. So it takes, if the county takes no action, they are in effect agreeing with the NIA, which is exactly what happened, it was brought up to the county commission on two separate occasions within the 30-day limit, there was even, if we wanted to do a special meeting, was addressed, because we could do that, so we weren't under the gun for, we have to do it right now, and the county ran it through our county treasurer, the county treasurer then made a recommendation to the county board, or gave the information to county board, the county board did not object to the NIA, their position is not to agree to it, it's to not object to it, that's the way the state statutes read, there's nothing any of us can do about those state statutes, whether we agree with them or disagree with them.
And the thing that came up during the meeting, but didn't come during the workshop, is those can be renegotiated, so the county can come, the city can come and say, hey, we need to reassess what that freeze is, and because of X, Y, Z, so it is something we can talk about.
So I got to ask our newly sitting commission members, did this idea come, and you as well, Kev, did this idea come before our new members became members on our commission board, was this thought of and then played before they got on the board, or was this talked about and you guys all agreed, NIA's, because the reason I ask is...
Yeah, we were on, and it started in February.
Yes.
So you guys already knew all about...
We were elected in November, and then we were on, and it started, I believe, in February.
We first started talking about the master plan.
We started with planning the...
That was part of the master plan.
Oh, the workshop and fire hall, right?
Well, so at the fire hall workshop, we didn't specifically mention the NIA, so we, what we did, but in February...
But you did, you kind of, the 425...
We talked about the DDA, and we did the priorities.
And that was before these two.
Yeah, but that was only the DDAs, and we then strategized what strategies made sense and prioritized, but the NIA was part of the master plan joint meeting that we did in February, and that's when that was talked about, because that is a tool you can use to implement your master plans.
So then, Caitlin, you can honestly say, the meeting at the fire hall had nothing to do...
Correct, it was all master plan, there was nothing on NIA.
No thoughts of NIA at that time.
Not that I'm aware of, and I let it.
Okay.
And we talked about the Van Dyke corridor, we talked about, there was the visioning session, which more had the DDA visioning components as part of that. Yeah, so this is in February, the joint meeting I'm talking about, but then we had the...
With the water bills, I got on this commission some years back, because they forgot to raise our water for eight years in a row, and if you noticed in the last few years, our water bill has jumped, it jumped fairly high, we're trying to catch up for eight years that they forgot to raise the water bill, that's how the city was running back. So, Stu, who forgot to do the water bill for eight years?
I have no idea, that's why I got on when I found out, that's why I ran.
This ain't, those are the questions.
That's the same, that's the same guy that built that beautiful garden in the middle of M53.
You mean, you have the, you have the brick painting, yeah, the $300,000...
Yes, yes, it's the same garden.
All right, so, did anybody else over here have their hand up? I think she did, and then we'll go back to you, Seth, or...
Yeah, so two questions, same word, incentive, right, so I'm curious on two things, for the county to say they either had to approve, or deny, or object, or whatever the verbiage was, and they did not object, my question, I guess, is why, right? Typical human behavior, you don't do something for nothing most of the time, so if they're willing to not capture this particular amount of money, what is the incentive? I understand, last week you guys, or last time, there was the conversation of the 30 years, there's a little bit of kickback to them once you get to that, that's a really bad turnaround, if I was an investor in something, and, oh, you'll see something in 30 years, like, that's not great, right? So those numbers alone wouldn't incentivize me to want to get on board, so to speak, right? That's one. My second incentive question is, the people that are on this board, now I've only been three or four of these, so I don't really know anybody in this room, I've lived here three and a half years, but I've never really been in it, so to speak, but I've seen over the past four or five meetings that we've all been here, that the people that sit at that table, every time we speak or share something, you all nod in disagreement with us, but then when one that sits at this table speaks, you all nod in agreeance with that person, so over the past two, three meetings, it's very clear that whatever we say out here, you guys are probably going to vote this in. My question is, why? Like, why are you guys now defending it so hard, and what is, what is this great benefit that you, if we all sit here and say that we don't want it, and here's some pretty good reasons why, what is your incentive to say, well, actually, this is why we're going to do this, or this is why we think that we should do this? Because I watch your head, and every time they speak, you just nod, yes, yes, like, you're just on board, no, this lady here.
Oh, yeah.
But then, when we speak, it says, no, that's not how it is, that's not how it is, but it is how it is, so I'm curious, the incentives of the county, why they're willing to let this go on a 30-year return, and what are you, what's in it for you guys? Why are you guys pushing it so hard? And if you're going to basically team up together, why are we all even here, I guess? Like, why are you even allowing us platform if you're not even really listening and hearing it? Because just sitting on the outside, as someone who's not been included in this for years, it very much seems smoke and mirrors, like an appeasement to let you guys do whatever it is that you're going to do anyways.
Why don't we get a vote on this? Why don't the citizens, I understand it might be a bigger hassle, but it's...
It's procedurally how it has to be adopted, that's the reason why we can't do it formally. I know that, Ian, you can jump in, I don't want to speak more of the county.
Yeah, the county level.
Sure, yeah, I can answer that question. So, in my opinion, and I think I speak for my fellow commissioners, the county does not operate on an incentive or investment basis, that's not what good government does. What good government does is, is they try to build strong and better communities, and the county really sees this as an investment in Emily City to build a stronger and better community, that's why the county's interested in it. Now, will it, will there be some beneficial portions of this to the county? Yes, there will, because we have extra voted millage, so the extra voted, as we explained before, is not captured in this NIA, so those increases will continue to go back to the county, so the law enforcement millage, which is also the prosecutor's millage, the sun crest millage, the senior millage, the veterans' millage, the EMS millage, all of those millages, the county will, if you will, reap the rewards of any development that goes on in Emily City. What the county doesn't reap the rewards of, if you will, is the additional increase in the general operating fund tax. Now, why would we do that? We believe that financially we're sound, and we can, we've looked at that, and we, that's not going to be a detriment to the county.
We, who?
The county.
When you say we, the county?
The county has looked at that, we made the assessment that that's not going to be detrimental in any way to the county, and we think that it's a smart community building program to give up that extra, or that additional increase in the general operating fund tax to go back to the city, to reinvest in the city, to build the city up and continue to grow, that's the position of the county. We are not a financial advisor, we are not a stockbroker, that's not what, I don't think anybody would want their government to act that way. I think the county has been extremely, I mean, I've been there a long time, and I think the county, we are the third lowest tax county in the state of Michigan, I don't think that's a bad thing, I think that's a good thing, I don't like to pay any more taxes than anybody else here does, but we also want to reinvest in our communities, we see this as a way of doing it, I brought in that sheet from 2024 that talked about all of the different tipus, which is what NIA is, within the county, and what those county general... and what those, those county general fund operating taxes are, that are being captured are. So that everybody could actually see what that is. It happens in, in, you know, LaPere, Metamora, Alma, all the, all the communities around. Metamora has one TIF, which includes the entire village of Metamora. It, it doesn't, you know, they don't have just their little DDA in downtown, it includes the entire village. So we looked at that and we decided as a, as a board that, that that would be beneficial to build up one of the communities within our county. That's the answer.
Part two, no, I have a second.
No, wait, you wanna go to part two on the benefit?
The benefit, I mean, there's, there's nothing that's incentivizing this for us right now. Our benefit is that we get to keep money into the city. We don't have to worry, you know, we're not, we're not paying money for Hadley or for Metamora to maybe get some extra roads or get some more money for over there. Our money gets to be used here. We get to use it on Fourth Street, we get to use it on Palomino Avenue, we get to use it over on, we get to use it in places where it otherwise wouldn't be used. And in order to, to, to do that, I mean, to, to, what am I gonna say? Just to defend what we're doing here, part of this is a little bit debate, part of this is question and answer. You guys come to us with questions, we're trying to answer them and we're trying to, it influences our vote too and our, and our opinions on this. As commissioners, hearing what you guys have to say and, and hearing questions in different ways and giving answers from, and getting answers from everyone else who is possibly involved in this, it helps shape our opinions and our either issues or concerns or, or likes and dislikes about the question. So we really do appreciate you guys having, we really do appreciate you guys coming out here and asking us all these things.
So I guess, to kind of piggyback off this gentleman, I know that we can't take a vote. Let's hypothetically, there's how many people that are gonna vote this NIA thing in?
Seven.
Seven. There's seven of you and there's how many of us in this room right now? So let's pretend there was a vote, yes and no, you guys would lose.
But it's a, it's a republic.
So I understand, I'm just, I'm just saying, stating the obvious.
But that's the reason this room right now, you have to say with the entire residency of Emily City. So where they, where they lie.
Okay, sure, but I'm saying you're, you have seven people pushing super hard against twenty-some people, six.
But if you look at it the other way, well, when you look at it the other way, there's 3,000 people in Emily City and only twenty of you. I'm not trying to take size of this, but that's...
You are, you all are, of course you are, that's okay, I'm just curious, why?
Two people were able to watch the meeting, there was two of us.
I'm speaking to the people in this room right now, if it was the sixth against this room, you guys would lose. That's what I'm saying.
With all due respect to that, this commission is elected to represent the citizens of the city of Emily City. So there isn't, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know who all is citizens and who is not, I have a pretty good idea. So, so before we say everybody in this room is all in one, one scenario, there, there's a number of people that are not citizens that did not elect these people to represent them. They, they elected the township leaders or, you know, where, maybe they live in the village of Alma, I have no idea. But these people are elected to represent the citizens of Emily City.
Sure, I, look, we can pick apart the verbiage of me using an absolute, but everyone in this room gets what I'm saying, that's all.
You got something back there?
I just have a question. And I might be ignorant with this and I know we talked about it a little bit. When you talk about Stoltz wanting to sell their land, and it's a couple of people I've talked to, they feel the same way. Why is it, would it be the city's responsibility to help develop it? Wouldn't the developer come in and get water lines and sewer lines and all that stuff?
Right.
Because if I just did, I just did a project in my backyard and I take trees out, that was my responsibility. So why wouldn't it be Stoltz's responsibility in or the, and I'm not being there for...
No, 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 it's a hundred percent valid question. The, the NIA and the projects that are hypothetically listed in that are very much that, they are hypothetical scenarios. It is not detailed enough to say you will or will not provide funding, or you will or will not take out loans, or you will or will not, and so the intention is, is when you actually have a Stoltz project come in, you have the NIA say to that board of those seven members, what is reasonable with the money that we have available in the NIA? Because you can't grab general funds, you have to stick only with the NIA funding. What are we willing to do or not do? And so that's where most NIA's, you're not becoming the developer.
So it's not an automatic that they would get that?
No, not at all. And so it just depends on where that gap funding is. When, most of these, when they're being processed through a DDA or an NIA, they come up with a plan, they say, or you already have a city program, that's gonna be one of the first things, if you adopt the NIA's, I would say, prepare what programs look like. So are you gonna do a residential loan program at low risk? What does that look like, who's qualified? You can do the same thing for gap funding for developers. You're not willing to just give out grants, you are gonna make those loans and you're gonna do X, Y, Z. So the NIA, I think the first thing you do before anyone walks to your table is provide those policies. So that way you can understand what do you want to fund? Because it's generally in the plan, because if you don't put it in the plan, then you can't do it. So the general idea is that you wanna make it a more, more broad wish list. So if something does come forward, you can evaluate it and say a yes or no as opposed to an automatic no, from whatever stage stature allows. So it's not a done deal for Stoltz property, it's not typical that you say, oh, we're gonna pay for all your roads. That is not standard practice for NIA's.
I was confused.
No, and it is confusing.
Great question.
Hey, Caitlin, you had a pamphlet, maybe this will help clarify to some people, you had a pamphlet with a projection up to 2056 for NIA. Could you show everybody that projection and then also tell us where your projection's pulling the money from? Like, what, what do you see that would, would gain that much money?
In the TIF plan, which was part of that document that's been available to the public, if you were to go to the back part of that, there's a bunch of different tables. Part of it is that those tables are meant to be an educated guess on what we anticipated it. So I took the tax assessed value, what the assessor provided me.
Okay, but an educated guess off, off what? How'd you come up with the guess at that much money? Because I think you told me five, was it five million at the end of, at 2056? We would have potentially five million in NIA then.
So I anticipated that the increase per year would be about 2.5% of the current taxable value. And so that is a very conservative number, the low end, because you don't wanna go too far the other way, you wanna be reasonable. And so the intention is, is that I would presume everyone that's within that NIA, based on taxable value, you'd see a 2.5 increase where it would go to the NIA. So that's what the intention was, whatever that frozen rate is from the county and things of that nature. So in table two, that's where you have your anticipated capture. So the first year, you're anticipating to get $54,000 total. And then by the end of it...
Well, can you give us year, because the first year, 56,000, you could almost build a pavilion. Can you give us 10 years, what you're predicting?
Yeah, so...
Because, right, that doesn't make sense to have a whole entity of government for 56 grand, can our commission...
But it's not an, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not an entity of government. The thing I really encouraged by when I studied this is, you could be a possible person that sits on that committee, because you can fill out, if it does pass, we're not even saying it's gonna pass. And you are sitting on that, you say, this is the most important, there's three priorities we wanna do. We only got $56,000 a dollar the first year. You don't have to spend it all, but it's still, you put it together, that committee puts it together, say, we wanna do this, this and this, and you bring it in.
Because we hit the half million point we hit in 2034. And that's, that's where, that's your annual gain.
So that's what the county wouldn't get. So Mr. Count and the commissioners in the county are just willing to give up a half a million dollars?
Yes, because, no, 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 listen to what he says, clarify that.
No, no, that's the total capture, correct?
Yes.
Right, so, so the projected, so the county is a proportion of that. That's not, the county, that's not the entire, that dollar amount and those projections, not the entire...
What we anticipate, the county wouldn't get as part of that year capture would be $95,000.
And that was...
That would be just for that year, they would not get that component, that county would be diverted to the NIA. But they would still get, still get some funding to do the baseline, because of the...
Yeah, the baseline, yes.
Does that help kind of clarify all this?
It does.
So, so, because the intention is...
It does, but it still doesn't make a lot of sense unless there's an alternative motive with tax grants and other things to make this...
Because then at the end of, and this is a very conservative number, if there's new construction, that throws this out of the, out of the loop.
Thank you, how, how does it throw it out of the loop?
Because I'm assuming everything is there and it increases by 2.5%.
Yes, a new construction uncaps that and you collect it all.
Well, you're expecting, it's a bigger tax property value. And so you're going to get more, from every, everyone gets more tax revenue from a new development. And so, I mean, by the end of this, you're looking at potentially having $30 million by the end of that year component. So this is siphoning money that would otherwise go regionally to stay locally and then choosing what projects you choose to make projects that would never have happened, happen.
I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around why the county's willing to give up the $30 million. So maybe I'll talk to some other representatives at the county and see what it is, you know?
Yep, I can answer that, but that's a different opinion. Marshall?
Well, question, question on that, the county.
Yeah.
You said they're gonna be able to get the, you mentioned the police...
The base value.
No, you mentioned Suncrest and...
Special Mill is correct.
Okay, like the police department. What, is there some kind of deal, or I wanna say deal, is there something where you plan on investing into like Suncrest, into the police department and other things to increase that value so that the county does get more?
That is what they automatically get. So as you, as you get a new construction, the percentage value, they still capture all of it.
And would we plan on doing construction like the Suncrest and expanding the police department and stuff like that, which would increase the, what the county would get?
That's a county, that's a county choice to do what they choose to do with those funding sources.
Because that's the only funding they can use to do that, or, or, I'm not worried with very well. Do we, Emily City, plan on investing money into increase the police department or to develop in Suncrest or anything like that, Emily City? So where the county would be able to reap more benefits from this?
I understand what he's trying to say. So, so those extra voted millages, they're, they're voted by the people, right? We all, we all vote on whether we wanna pass those millages or not. So if there was an increase, like, let's say we said, the county said, Suncrest came to us and said, we wanna double our size. And we need, I don't know, what's the Suncrest millage now? It's 0.8% or something like, yeah, it's small. I think it's less than a mil. Let's say they said, we, we need two mills to do it. That would come to a vote of the people to, of the entire county, to set the Suncrest millage at two mills instead of 0.8%.
Okay, the entire county, not just Emily City, so we would see, so, okay, the bottom line question is, is that gonna happen? Is that coming to, is that gonna be a thing on the next voting ticket for the county, not the assembly city, to increase those millages?
Oh, that...
Where the county would, I'm, I'm just thinking the county is getting something out of this if there's an increase, that just makes logical...
Well, and part of it is, you can renegotiate those. So if, let's say the county, as part of the general operating budget, 10 years from now, they say, you know, we have these other components, we, and just like, look here, EMS did, you saw in the paper several years ago, they went around to every single DDA and said, please stop correcting or capturing, we don't have the operating funding to provide the EMS service we need. And so they went to each of those jurisdictions and said, look, this is what we need to do. You can still do that with the NIA taxing jurisdiction. So if the county's having issues with that, with the city component of that, we can reevaluate that.
To answer your question, I can tell you that...
Give me one of them, ask.
Yeah, I have a question. There has been no discussion in the county...
That's what I'm asking.
...to increase in taxes, with the exception of, I did ask the question to our county administrator a month ago, if they had, if, if there was even a thought in his mind to request with the county commission that the county's general operating fund, to go back out to the voters for an increase in the county's general operating fund. And his, his answer to me in a public meeting was definitively no.
Okay.
So...
That was the question, okay, good question, thank you. Okay, Caitlin, why is the scope of work for this NIA so vast? I understand, like, okay, well, 30 years, well, that's a long time. And honestly, well, I think we said, the people that sit on this board, it's gonna be a couple, it'll be 10-year, 5-year, 2-year, 4-years on a road date.
Well, 40 terms.
Okay, 40-year terms, my apologies. But we're, you know, someone that starts it today is most likely not gonna see the whole thing through. So by the time this someone actually starts, you know, the money starts accumulating, the main picture's not there, you know? Say, say that we wanna develop the land and...
That's what you're trying to board.
Well, yes, what if I move out and the next person, you know, doesn't get the opportunity to move, you know, and understand all this? We can stop this today. But what I'm saying is that, is the, is the scope of work that Emily City really needs homes? Should we just come up with a plan ourselves and, you know, is the NIA required to be 30 years? Can it be a 10-year program? You say, hey, counties, can we do five or 10 years, let's capture this money, let's develop this land? And we go, okay, we, we didn't get all the marbles in our, in our hands, but, you know, we, we have a little taking gift. And we develop that land and we get the homes and then we get the tax revenue and we're all happy. Or we have to do this third-year plan and then the people 15 years down the line say, you know what? I don't have the sports complex, I don't care about the land. And then the original plan that we hoped for was homes is, is gone and now we're spending all our money on that. Like, I think maybe we should relook at this. Could it help Emily City? Probably, right? But, I know, but at the end of the day, there's gotta be some taking gift, 30 years is too long, we have $2 million to tie up. Yeah, we'll get some money, yeah, it's gonna stay in the community, but it's not the right plan for Emily City. We need to bring this scope of work down.
So, well...
But there's no, there's no other job you got there. Why, why don't you start framing for weight trim, right? Z contracts are out there, we're building frames for cattle center, we're out there framing those. Scope works us, you frame this here, it's a one-year project, here's your start, here's your end, it's a $2 million budget. That's, that's not there. It's literally just, this is what we can do, we can do this, we can do that, we can do this, you can pick and choose. Take your 50 million, pick and choose.
Yep, and so the easy question to answer there is, you can absolutely change what the person, that year amount is. That's something the city commission can say, we're gonna do these in a five-year expiration. The only component is, is then every five years, you then formally have to reestablish it.
Okay, but that, that gives us like checks and balances though, because if it's, it's not working, then we can say, hey, listen, it didn't work the last five years, first five years.
Well, you could always, also, you can, at any time, the city commission can just end it too.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's also, you know, if your home is through, then you can, okay, I understand.
Yeah, so there's the maintenance part, that's the incentive.
Do you even have to make that decision beforehand? Like, do we have to say, today is the 30-year, is the 30-year plan, no matter what, we can end it anytime? Or do we have to say, hey, you know what, let's accept that, let's do five-year plan, let's do a 10-year plan?
It's a great question.
Let's kind of cut a lot of this stuff down, let's cut the DTE, let's cut the backup water supply out, let's cut this out, you know? Let's cut the blight out, let's just say, our main goal of this, Emily City needs the homes. Let's find 425, this is what the first goal is. The first goal of this plan is, in 10 years, have enough money where we develop 350 homes on 475 or 425. You know, I think it's too big, because when you look at these things, you're reading one thing of DTE, we're gonna come, we're gonna come to subcontractor DDA or whatever it says, we're gonna drill two backup wells and we go, wait a minute, are we developing land for the farmer? Like, what, what's going on here? And I think you might have an answer for that.
So there's, there's a couple of things that go into, to, I think, what's, what's being talked about tonight, and specifically your question. Number one, there's a very important cog in this wheel that we're, we're not talking about, and that's the planning commission. And I'll, I'll give you an example, we've talked about the Stoltz property tonight. The Stoltz property is zoning R1, you know, residential, single-family homes. It doesn't matter what the NIA wants to do, the NIA still has to perform within the zoning plan. So if a developer came and said, I wanna put apartments on the Stoltz property, they would have to request a zoning ordinance change, they have to request the zoning got changed on that property. The real defense and the, the, the plan, if you will, is...
See, well, I know that at the end of the day, we all said, we need rooftops. And if, if you're faced with half the money for federal aid for building multifamily homes or building only 400 homes as single-family residents, the board would be wise in their own minds to vote for the... the board would be wise in their own minds to vote for the multifamily housing. I would almost vote myself for that if I sat on a board in a big city, because it makes the most logical sense. I'd bring more money in, the school district is bigger. I get the Aldi, I'll get the Walmart, I get the plant fitness, I get the SNAP fitness, because you would, that would make the most sense. And that's what we're trying to...
But that's, I wanna tell you, that's where the checks and balances are.
That's not the check and balance, because who sits on the zoning board?
Well, the planning commission is the one that looks at it.
Okay.
And that's...
I know, but if I sat on five boards, I vote myself every board.
And the other, the other part of that is that you don't, you don't know how especially the federal money is going to come down in the future. There, you know, there could be, I hunt in Cass City, way out in the middle of nowhere. There's fiber that runs right by that hunting ground. We don't have fiber in Emily City. The reason that was is because, long story, I can explain later, but it was a rural connectivity grant that they took advantage of. And there was reasons why we didn't hear and look for...
But we also think that...
That's the key, yeah.
And that could be, some, hey, you have a couple of tunnels are coming down. It might not be money for apartment buildings. It very well might not be. But it might be infrastructure like fiber, vacation, water, roads. There's a lot of those things that could come in.
And I know one of the things that, when the NIA, like, sign up for the board forms happen, and I don't wanna steal our thunder from during the meeting, but we had already talked about, at this meeting, what we wanted to do is it's an all-encompassing form, and so it includes other boards. So there's only seven people that can serve on the NIA. And if you're interested in, say, on the planning commission, on the CBA, please check that box so that it can be evaluated. There are some things that we have, some current vacancies as part of the Parks and Rec Board, an alternative for the CBA. I was gonna go through those boards and explain each of them real quickly during the meeting, just so then, when the application comes out, we can evaluate who is on those.
Caitlin, is there any way it could exclude anybody that's sitting on a board already?
That's what I was gonna ask. Is there a way that living, probably, people aren't on all these boards?
So no matter what, from here till the thirty years, the NIA can only exist of people that are not on another board in Emily City?
So that's a policy choice, yes.
Okay.
That's a policy choice, yep.
Is that a choice the commission is willing to look at? To say you can't be on the DDA, you can't be on the planning commission, and on the NIA? Are you guys willing to make that stipulation to have? For husbands or wives?
That's something we can do, right?
For husbands or wives?
Absolutely. Yeah, we have to apply to the policy.
I'm not being rude, I'm saying, you're not...
And that's something that...
We have to approve the policy, so approve the policy that the NIA would decide to enact, like their bylaws. So we could say, no, we don't like this, go back to the draw.
And that's something that the mayor said that she would be happy to reevaluate, even if, like, the planning commission is a full board. But has somebody just been waiting for the opportunity to say, I'm good, I can phase out? Because institutionally, you wanna have a bunch of different people at different stages of commitment, because you don't wanna have a bunch of people that have only ever been there.
But I don't, as a citizen, I also don't want, you know, this person and this person's spouse that are on boards that are gonna make the same, they're gonna have, you know, positive interest of... Of course, if you want it, and I'm your spouse, I'm gonna vote, yeah, I want it, too. You know what I mean?
That could happen, yes.
I always have my thoughts, but...
But that's something that, we've before, we're encouraging people to, which means that so that we can evaluate. One of the struggles in any jurisdiction is getting somebody to fill when that vacancy happens.
Right.
And so that's something that the city's willing to reevaluate who's on what overall.